Good evening. I would like to call tonight's meeting of the City of Tacoma Park. City Council took order. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Fulcher.
Present.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Hansak.
Present.
Councilmember Small.
Yes, yes, y'all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. Just want to run really quickly through our upcoming agendas. There is no change to the agenda for this evening, but I do want to acknowledge what we will be talking about tonight and modifications to the upcoming agenda. So tonight, we will have our legislative updates. We will also have an update from our council working group on committees. We also will have two voting sessions this evening. The first is a single reading ordinance authorizing a contract for the Besheers Run Outfall Repair and Stream Restoration, as well as a first reading ordinance amending the city code to ban combustible engine-powered leaf blowers. And then we'll have a work session this evening on facilities regulations review. In terms of upcoming agendas, on Monday, March 11th through Wednesday, March 13th, a number of members of council will be attending the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference that will be taking place in Washington, DC. On Wednesday, March 13th, the council will have its regular meeting at 7:30. We'll have a legislative update, a presentation on the Police Department Annual Report, as well as a voting session, the second reading ordinance amending the city code to ban combustible engine-powered leaf blowers, the single reading ordinance approving a contract with Mayorkas Services LLC for the stabilization of the vacant Washington McLaughlin School site at 6501 Poplar Avenue, as well as a resolution calling for hostage release, bilateral ceasefire, and humanitarian aid to Gaza. We will have two work sessions that evening. The first is FY 2025 Budget Priorities Resolution on the Rec Center Next Steps. And the second, tentatively, is a budget, council budget working group presentation. On Wednesday, March 20th, the city council will not meet. And I believe that is, just triple checking, the 27th, I believe, we do have a schedule adjustment, but we can share that in an updated agenda next week. All right. So with that, I am going to turn things over to our legislative lobbyist in Annapolis, Ann C. Cutt. Welcome to provide us with our legislative update.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Mayor and everybody. So we're hurtling toward crossover, which is Monday, the 18th, which is, which means that there's a lot of non-fanatic activity right now with committees holding lots of voting sessions, trying to move bills so that Senate bills get in the House and House bills get in the Senate by that crossover deadline. We have committed some testimony this week on a joint resolution related to the use of nuclear weapons. And we are literally right this moment, I'm going to get right back to it when we're done here. The House Environment Transportation Subcommittee is taking up amendments on the Just Cause Eviction Bill. And it's pretty notable, this is the first time the bill's made it to this step. So we're very excited to see what are the amendments that some of the advocates, the tenant advocates have been promoting to see which ones are going to make it onto the bill and, you know, get it out of committee. And then we'll work really, and give lots of thanks to Deloitte Wilkins and the committee that passes this, and then work really hard on making sure that Senator Smith on the Senate side and his committee do the same.
Great. All right. Do we have any, Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Ann. It's always good to see you. And I first wanted to apologize to you for missing our meeting on Thursday. You can tell I'm still a little hoarse. I actually got sick from the in-and-out on the difficult weather day on Wednesday. But I did want to also bring up to you, you kind of are describing a nexus between a couple of different people and a couple of different things that I think we do need an update on. And that is both the Just Cause eviction amendments and where you see the direction of that bill heading, because a lot of times amendments are either dilutions or enhancements. And then also the nexus between that and Senator Smith specifically, because as a city and whatnot, we are a little bit concerned about where his committee is on juvenile justice. And so I'm curious about, now that we are into the part where we're almost getting ready to cross bills over and people are really doing the horse trading and whatever, I'd like to know where we are with regard to what could pass.
So, so that's what literally is going on right now in the House Subcommittee. They are talking about those, what amendments, and we haven't seen them, the final version. So as soon as we have that, if we don't get it tonight, we'll have it tomorrow. And, you know, we can certainly share, you know, they're, they're, they're taking a really great bill and they're going to tweak it. You know, there'll be some things in it that might be.
What means tweak is another man's.
There might be a couple, there might be a couple of things that aren't. So, so we'll have to see about that. And then on the juvenile reform issue, I mean, I think that's, the House and Senate have passed very different bills and they're going to take the next few weeks to try to work out those differences. And we can certainly have a discussion offline about if there are particular things that the city wants to try to weigh in on.
Be happy to do that. And thanks. And again, I'm sorry, I had a cold and whatnot.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Awesome. Do we have any other questions or comments about? I will say, and I am super excited about the fact that Just Cause has moved out of committee.
It's moving, it's moving.
It's moving. I don't want to jinx it. So that is, that is wonderful. But, well, we're going to give you a little bit of a shorter legislative update this evening. We really appreciate all of the hard work that you've been doing with identifying bills and moving testimonies forward with us. And I want to thank Councilmember Dibala, Councilmember Small, for all the work that they've been doing on the Subcommittee to kind of move things forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Have a good one. All right. So we're going to move on to public comments on voting items this evening. The first voting item is the Single Reading Ordinance authorizing a contract for the Besheers Run Outfall Repair and Stream Restoration. The second item is the First Reading Ordinance amending the city code to ban combustible engine-powered leaf blowers. Do we have any public comments this evening on voting items? Do we have any general, oh, just want to check online. Do we have any? Okay. Do we have any general public comments this evening? Come on down.
Good evening, folks. More hours. Thanks for all you're doing. Good evening. Paul Hubner, Ward 3. I come before you once again to request that Mayor Circe lead this council to draft, recommend, and approve an immediate ceasefire resolution for Gaza. I'm confident that by now, everyone has seen or heard last week's public comments by Vice President Harris as she stood in front of the Edmond Prentice Bridge on the anniversary of Bloody Sunday, a spot where John Lewis was nearly beaten to death by Georgia State Troopers. The leading Democratic woman stood up to reclaim the party's leadership role in progressive politics in issuing a resounding demand in support of President Biden's call for a ceasefire now. For Tacoma Park, after weeks of wrangling over the details of some mythical security issues and after scores of residents have demanded a ceasefire, it is more than time for our mayor to lead this council through a ceasefire resolution, an urgent issue for Democrats and progressives here and nationwide. In a town once renowned for its progressive values, it is past time for our little town to step up in support of the Palestinian struggle for human rights and an end to the murderous indiscriminate attacks on women, children, and male non-combatants. Pass a resolution for an immediate ceasefire now in Gaza. And thank you.
Thank you. Come on down if you have any comments.
Hi, council members. As my T-shirt says, "We will not be silent" in Arabic. My name is Susan Rogers, and I'm a longtime resident of Tacoma Park on Lincoln Avenue in Ward 2. I have my PhD in Conflict Studies at the University of Colorado, and I have worked in 22 countries. I am also a member of the Democratic Socialists of America, the Montgomery County branch, and a member of the Tacoma Park Quaker Meeting. Both of my organizations have formally endorsed ceasefire in Gaza. I'd like to send you, and I will send you, the statement from the Quakers. As you know, Quakers have a long history of carrying out humanitarian assistance and leading efforts to build peace in situations of conflict. We hold that principles under international humanitarian law, including the Fourth Geneva Convention, must be respected. This is not taking place in Palestine. While my mental health and emotional health has been challenged seeing the Israeli genocide of so many Palestinians, I'm also aware of the aggressive Zionist colonial behavior toward Palestinians that has gone on for 75 years, displacing over 750,000 Palestinians and taking over their land. But my emotional health is nothing that Palestinians in this country are facing. One example is my best friend from kindergarten, Helen Sanham, a Lebanese woman whose husband is Palestinian and has lost several relatives in Gaza. So I am grieving with her and her family. I am so pleased that the Maryland Delegate Acevero's resolution related to ceasefire is being considered by the Maryland Legislature. And I have sent it to all of you. And I think the reason I support this legislation, and I've spoken to it about it in, in regard to a meeting on Monday, is that it's very balanced and comprehensive. And I think the language in it is something that you really should look at and consider, because I know that being balanced and comprehensive is something you would like. I, being a member, being a resident in Tacoma Park, as many people have said, you know, it's one of the most progressive cities in our country, and I'm so proud to live here with you all. And so I think, I think that I want to ask you as our council to really consider a resolution on this, this topic. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sharon Levy. I did serve on the city council in the 80s. And I continue to live in beloved Tacoma Park, which I consider a very peace-loving community. I've been very much outraged at what has happened in Gaza. It seems anytime I look at accounts on TV or television, yesterday I heard a commentary about how many sites beside children and people, ancient sites have been destroyed in Gaza. And there was a very tearful account of the, one of the oldest Hamabs in this, in the Arab world being destroyed without any explanation. I also am appalled that our government is supplying military aid to Israel. I think that we, as a community, a peace-loving community, should take a stand and call for an immediate ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Pence Gunter, Ward 1, unceded territory of the Pescataway Nakotchank people. So many have spoken so eloquently in this room in favor of a Gaza ceasefire resolution, so why add one more voice? Because there's still no resolution nor draft that we've seen so far for review. My sense is your hesitation is less about the merits of a ceasefire itself, but rather that passing a ceasefire resolution will serve to divide our community or make people feel unsafe, as some speakers here have suggested. Let's ask ourselves why it would in a city like this, that has a long history of defending and protecting the rights of everyone in this community. Why would our city fail at that now? What would change? We know that antisemitism did not start on October 7th, and nor did the now decades-long oppression of the Palestinian people. For many of us who have spoken here and who, like me, lost family members to the Holocaust during World War II, we know antisemitism did not start then either. It has been going on for more than 2,000 years. So yes, there is antisemitism in our society and also vile discrimination and hate crimes directed towards Muslims and African-Americans, Latinx and Asians, immigrants and the LGBT community, especially trans women of color, the most at risk of violence amongst all of us. The imperative to keep us all safe is to prevent another Trump presidency. Let's remember what Trump's so-called "good people" chanted in Charlottesville. The choice we face in November will be Biden or Trump. That means every community in this country must exert pressure on the Biden administration to stop arming Israel and to call for an immediate, permanent ceasefire. Whether we like Biden or not, we have to make it possible for people to vote for him. That is one reason why Tacoma Park needs to pass a ceasefire resolution. This is a local issue. In the 1930s, the US turned away ships carrying desperate Jewish refugees because some people here at home were uncomfortable with accepting them. If US cities had raised their voices louder then, would some of our relatives have survived? Staying silent or passing a weak resolution means we are okay with a genocide. And if we are okay with this genocide, then we have to be okay with the one that killed 6 million Jews during the Holocaust. To me, not condemning a genocide is antisemitic. We are not being bombed or running for our lives or experiencing famine. If we are afraid, we can call the police and the police will come. But if you're a five-year-old Hinn Rajab in Gaza and you call for help and help is sent, those coming to save you are murdered and you die. Please delay no longer. Write and pass a strong, meaningful resolution that calls for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza.
Come on down.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joanie Eisenberg. I live in Ward 3. I've lived in Tacoma Park for 45 years. I'd like to share a little bit about my life and why I am so deeply and painfully disturbed that genocide is being committed in my name. I come from New York City. I grew up in a reform activist radical Jewish home. My family was never Zionist. They were always pro-peace. My grandparents came from Poland where they were escaping brutal times there. My, my grandfather, his hero was John Brown. He, he was very much a John Brown advocate, and we had books of John Brown all around the house. When my, his first child, my mother, was born, he was trying to figure out a name for her that would represent the concept of freedom and liberty and, and everything he believed in. And he was going to name her Liberty or Peace. But he contacted a rabbi who later became quite a famous rabbi. My grandfather was an upholsterer, and this is one of his clients, Rabbi Stephen Wise, who, who later became a very well-known and respected leader in the Jewish Reform Movement. And he told my grandfather, "Don't name her Liberty. That would be strange for a girl." Name her Justine after justice. So my mother was named for Justine. She lived her entire 103 years, standing up against fascism, against racism, and for peace. So when I'm here in this room and when I go out to those protests, there are several people that are with me that are ancestors, my mother, and I'm going to get to Sammy Abbott in, in a minute. But I wanted to just talk a little bit more about my family in New York. On my mother's side, we had, we had 37 people killed in the gas chambers in Poland. My grandmother went to try to tell them to come back here to, to New York, and they said, "Oh, no, we'll be fine." And so I used to wonder as a child, I, I used to imagine them because we didn't really see some of the pictures, the way we see pictures now. I didn't see the pictures till I was maybe six or seven and eight. I used to wonder, how could people be so cruel to put children and my, my family members in a gas chamber? Well, I have a much better understanding of how people could do that. That's, that's why I think about Hitler and I think about my family, who was killed in those gas chambers every time I turned the TV. And the idea that the same thing is going on, if not worse, in my name. This genocide is being done in my name, in my mother's name, in my family's name. It is just, it's just beyond, it's just horrific. But so.
Thank you so much. Your time is up.
My time is up.
Yes, ma'am.
You cannot take me off this before I talk about Sammy Abbott.
Well, we've heard about Sammy Abbott quite a bit.
What did Sammy Abbott say?
And there's a line behind you, ma'am.
I am sorry. Sammy Abbott said, "If something could not be done in Tacoma Park, there's no hope for this nation."
Thank you very much.
And Sammy Abbott wouldn't sit down.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm very highly disturbed about you guys.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Forty-five, well, forty-five other cities have.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
What are you going to do? Carry me out? Lock me up? How many other cities have passed a ceasefire and we can't pass one in Tacoma Park? What kind of city is this? Is this a city that stands for?
Ma'am, I, I hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm speaking out against genocide.
Thank you very much. And there are people behind you that will likely do the same. Come on down. No, no, no. I.
I said for the next person behind you to please come down. Go right ahead.
My name is Emily Schacter, and I want to make a few comments on the ceasefire. I spoke last week as well. The many well-meaning people calling for a ceasefire in Gaza are certainly passionate in their statements, and I think they deeply believe in the goodness and righteousness of what they are saying. They see the destruction and massive death toll in Gaza, and they want it to stop. I believe they're earnest in their wishes and statements. Indeed, I want the same thing. What these folks don't understand is that they don't simply want a ceasefire, and they don't simply want the deaths to stop. They want Israel to stop exclusively.
No.
And therein lies the problem.
Not true.
Although they mean well in their hearts, some may not, you have to understand that the demand is not for a simple ceasefire. Let me explain. If I told them that they could have a ceasefire immediately, if Hamas would lay down their arms, leave the tunnels from which they are fighting guerrilla warfare, and surrender, would they accept this ceasefire agreement? If I told them that Israel would stop the collateral killing of innocent people immediately if Hamas would just surrender, would they jump up and say yes? Sadly, I wager that they would not, even though it would stop all the killing that is causing our hearts so much pain. Why? Because they believe that Israel is the one that should be laying down their arms. They don't cry out for Hamas to stop. They call out for Israel to stop. Hamas started the war with the October 7 massacre purposely hidden among the civilians in order to protect themselves and has been fighting with Israel nonstop ever since. Yet these folks are not calling out for Hamas to stop the fighting. They are only angry with Israel, and they blame only Israel for all the deaths. How can this be? Because they've been utterly and completely bamboozled by the pro-Palestinian, anti-Israel, anti-Jewish propaganda that Hamas has orchestrated. Are you going to let yourselves be bamboozled too? Well, then we might as well fly a Palestinian flag over the municipal building. To me, their righteous indignation means nothing if they cannot get up and say with equal passion that they are appalled by what Hamas has done to bring on so much death and destruction. I'd like to ask the well-meaning people who are trying to force a ceasefire resolution to do the following. Next time you get up to speak on this issue, consider saying first that you support the right of Israel to have a safe and lasting existence, want the hostages who are being tortured and starved by Hamas to be released immediately, and that you're outraged by what Hamas has done. Then move on with your comments. And if you start to gag when you try to make these statements, then please ask yourselves why. Let me be clear, I abhor the current Israeli government and the right-wing zealots who are running it. These men are despicable, heartless despots who have no business being in power. Thank goodness, hundreds of thousands of Israelis who oppose them are marching daily and weekly in the streets of Israel. The Tacoma Park City Council has no business wading into this incredibly complex and tragic issue. Don't let yourselves be bamboozled.
Thank you very much. So... Hey! Hey! Now, people came up last week when I'm speaking, when I asked for everyone to respect one another and conflicting opinions and to treat each other in the way in which we are advocating for people abroad to be treated. I was accused of being problematic for setting the stage. I did not do that today, and this is what I'm seeing. Respect one another. People have their three minutes. I'm asking for people to stick to your three minutes, and if you don't have the floor, do not speak. I am so sorry. Come on down.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for letting me be here. My name is Allison Bondi. I serve on the Steering Committee of Jewish Voice for Peace, DC Metro. We are 152 days in to this genocide. We are asking you to do something small, but with the potential to have a serious domino effect in this community and the surrounding community. And that is, sorry. That is to pass a symbolic ceasefire resolution. I know I'm not the first to ask you, and that it's been about five weeks of your community calling on you to do this. Not to mention, 70 weeks before that, that you've gotten to watch online the most visually accessible genocide in human history. I've been haunted recently among many other images, but most recently an image of a child with limbs so small and thin that they could snap like a wishbone. And that's the result of starvation from hunger that's been designed, hunger that's been strategized. So I'm sort of at a loss as to what you need to hear at this point to be convinced to commit to this resolution. It's my guess that several of you have been moved emotionally, but fear the backlash you might face from your community were you to pass a ceasefire resolution. If that's the case, if it's out of fear of being called antisemitic, as a Jew, I am insulted by your acceptance of the premise that speaking out against pure evil is antisemitic. I shouldn't have to say that. This is an issue of common sense. This isn't a religious issue. This is a humanitarian issue. It's an issue for the Palestinians and for the Arabs who live in your community. And I just want to ask you, you know, respectfully, what you're going to do about it. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Dave Zirin. I've lived in Tacoma Park for almost two decades. I'm a sports writer by trade, but I'm not coming here to talk about that. I'm talking to you because I'm a proud Jewish man, and I have been a lot longer than I've lived in Tacoma Park. And I really want to be perfectly clear about something because the implication is out there. There is absolutely nothing antisemitic about a ceasefire resolution and calling for peace and God's love. There's nothing antisemitic about it. And you follow the logic. I mean, to call the plea for peace antisemitic means calling Jewish organizations, like the incredible person who spoke before me represents, and rabbis across the country making this urgent call, it's calling them antisemitic. It also means calling our friends and neighbors in Tacoma Park, many of them in this room, many of them lifelong peace and justice activists. It means calling them antisemitic. And I would argue that calling or implying that ceasefire proponents are antisemitic is not a serious argument. It's slander. It's also insulting and frankly antisemitic to paint all Jews, Jews like myself, as supporting this horrific war on the people of Gaza just because we are Jewish. And as for the 100 Israeli hostages, given that more have died from Israeli bombings than any other way, a ceasefire seems more than logical, and to not call for one is to consign more of them to death as well. And that's why I'm here to you as a Jew to say that I wholeheartedly reject the idea that calling for a ceasefire is antisemitic. In fact, it is a moral necessity. And I call upon, please, the Tacoma Park City Council to stand up. We can be the first city in Maryland, I believe, to make this stand. And wow, the leadership we would show for the rest of the state. And the whole world is watching, and our inaction sends a message all its own. And I also, as long as I'm here, I was deeply hurt by the use of the word bamboozled to describe you as when you hear these arguments. I think frankly, it's patronizing and insulting, and you don't deserve that. Also, I couldn't help think that the word bamboozled is only known because of the oratory of one Mr. Malcolm X, who stood strongly for a free Palestine. So to use that to actually try to bully the council into thinking otherwise, to me, is utterly inappropriate. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Ziggy, are you coming down? Come on, Ziggy, come on. Ziggy and I have a very special relationship, so Ziggy can...
I think you live here.
Take as much, take as much time as he wants.
All right. Can you help me, Ziggy? Okay. Okay. Give me just a sec. Are you good? Okay. All right. Hi, my name is Lucy Moore, and I'm a resident of Ward Three. And I'm here tonight with Ziggy, my son. Ziggy, do you want to say hi and do your public comment?
Hi.
Do you want to say something? Okay. He wants to make sure his friend River gets one of these invitations. So we're here tonight to again ask you all to call or to pass a ceasefire resolution in Tacoma Park, and also to invite you to our next Families for Ceasefire event on Saturday. So on Saturday, you can hold that up, Ziggy. That's one of the things we're gonna be reading. So on Saturday from 10 to noon, we're gonna be at Rizom, DC, which is right near the CVS on Carol Ave. And we're gonna be hosting a Storytime for Palestine. So we're gonna be getting together with neighbors and residents to read children's stories about Palestinians, about their families. And it's an opportunity for you all to join us to not only meet the residents and neighbors who will be turning out, but also to have a chance to re-center all of our humanity. And I'd like to extend this invitation, you know, to all of you and also to everyone in attendance tonight and following, including those who have found the idea of a ceasefire to be dangerous, to be divisive. On some level, there's no way around that divisiveness, but I do think the choice of someone to, I realize it's not a choice, but the process of hearing or reading ceasefire and interpreting it as hate...
What about my turn?
This is part of your turn, is dehumanizing. Do you want to go give them these invitations? It's dehumanizing for those of us who are calling for ceasefire, and it devalues the lives of those who are being killed now in Palestine. And I've run into this in other settings. Yeah, I will. We've had a similar experience sharing out these events with parent groups, and it's disheartening to hear that dehumanizing nation from fellow parents. But it has been a very empowering experience to come together as a community. We've done art events. Rivers is over on the chair. We've done these readings, and we'd love for you to join us. And I think Ziggy has invitations for you, and I'll be leaving some somewhere at the back if I can for anyone else who's interested. Thank you. It's your turn. Do you want to say something now? We've got 30 seconds.
Thank you for waiting us. Come join us on Saturday? We have a nice time together? Thank you.
Ziggy knows how to change the mood of a room. So thank you so much, and thank you for the invitation.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Come on down.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Sarah Gold. I'm a Ward Three resident. I was here five weeks ago. I spoke with you all then in support of a ceasefire resolution. Tonight, I'm actually here for my friend Nora. She asked that I share some words with you and our community. Before I do that, I do want to take a moment to just state for the record that I am a Jewish resident of Tacoma Park, and I in no way feel threatened by the prospect of a ceasefire resolution. Quite the opposite, in fact. I'm feeling bullied. I'm feeling you are being bullied, and it's extremely painful to watch the way this process is unfolding. And on concerns about a resolution being divisive, I'd like to share my perspective, which is that the movement that's coming together around this, the movement that's coming together on Saturday, the families that are coming together, it's been one of the most unifying and beautiful community-building experiences that I've ever participated in, let alone in Tacoma Park. So now some words from my friend Nora. She says, "I grew up in Bethesda in Montgomery County. My Palestinian immigrant father chose the area because of their excellent schools, sense of community, and opportunity to live amongst our Jewish neighbors. He always said that if I grew up with Jewish friends, I would be an integral part of their lives, their communities. And one day, when my friends and I were old enough to talk politics, he hoped that we'd find a sense of camaraderie and kinship that would take us through even the most difficult of politics on Palestine and Israel. He's long since passed away, and each morning I wonder what he would be doing, what call to action he would take on, how he would balance the loss and devastation of his homeland with the chance to influence in his newfound one. I have been thinking lately that maybe you don't realize the opportunity that you've been given. I live in Cape Town, South Africa now, and each day here when I interact with white South Africans who grew up during apartheid, I always wonder what they were doing. Most carry some shame. Most say that they didn't know how bad it was. It wasn't really happening in their neighborhoods. They knew, but they didn't really know. They come up with justifications, how it's hard to change systems, how there really wasn't easy access to information, so they just didn't, and they just didn't know, et cetera, et cetera. But there's always guilt, and it lingers in their minds each day. Your gift is not to spend your life full of guilt and shame that you failed to act. It's not an insignificant gift, nor one you should take lightly. You have access to all the information you need at your fingertips. You've been watching this genocide unfold right before your eyes. And it'd be easy for me to rattle off the statistics on all the atrocities that we've witnessed, how our tax dollars are funding this, how we're responsible. But somehow that isn't moving you yet. So I just thought I would maybe ask why, truly why. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jumanah Musa. I'm a Ward Six resident. Quick birthday shout-out to Ward Six Jason Small. I'm back. So I'm gonna start with some words from Mahmoud Darwish, who teaches us that every beautiful poem is an act of resistance. One of the things he said is, "I speak only for myself, but that self is full of collective memory." He also said, "The Palestinians are the only nation in the world that feels certainty that today is better than what the days ahead will hold. Tomorrow always heralds a worse situation." That's never been truer than it is in this particular moment. So I want to talk about generational trauma, because in the context of the idea that people should stop dropping bombs, stop starving children and elderly people, deliver aid and medicine, there's an idea that that will invoke generational trauma. Last year, I sat with my father, a Nakba survivor, a survivor of 1948, forced out of their villages, my parents, both of them, with their families, under gunfire, never to return, never to reclaim the land that they tilled, the homes they built, and the life that they lived. It was 75 years, and he told the story of how his father, he was the youngest, and when the assault started, his father walked with him hours to another village. And he sat him down, and he told him that he took him there in the event that the rest of the family was killed so he could carry on the family name. And then his older brother showed up with a donkey cart, and then they continued their journey on the donkey cart. Here we are, 75, 76 years later. I watched a 90-year-old woman, also a Nakba survivor, walking from the north to the south, forced out of her home again because she was not native to Gaza. She was forced into Gaza. And we've seen entire families wiped off the civil registry. Not a single living person left in the family. That's the situation we're asking to stop. That does not invoke generational trauma. That is what humanity requires. I will say, you know, I show up every week because I feel like this, you know, next week, oh, we're talking about it. We're trying to find the right words. We've sent you the words of Rabbis for Human Rights, of every city that's passed a resolution, of the AME Church, of a multi-faith ginormous list of people, of the Pilgrimage for Peace, which is an interfaith group of people who walked from Philadelphia to DC. Rabbis for Human Rights even wrote a statement specific to municipal resolutions. Nobody has to look for the words. They are more than available. And so I just leave it with the idea that this will just be slow-walked until the bombs stop and you don't have to speak. And so I'll say what Martin Luther King said, which is, "We don't remember the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends."
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jamie Koppell, Ward Two resident. And I'm here along with several other folks because on February 4th, people in this room sent all of you... sent all of you a proposed draft resolution. And since no resolution has yet been made public, several of us want to read to you the one that has been shared already in hopes that it will help our neighbors know what continues to compel so many of us to return week after week. It will help you and all of them, we believe, understand what so many of us are calling for. Draft resolution, supporting an immediate and permanent ceasefire. A resolution calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in all of historic Palestine, West Bank, Gaza Strip, and Israel. An end to US aid and arms to Israel, lifting the siege on Gaza to allow immediate and sufficient humanitarian aid to enter, the release of all hostages held in Israel and Gaza, an end to Israel's genocide of Palestinians, and an end to the occupation of Palestine. Whereas, all life is precious. The targeting of civilians is a violation of international humanitarian law and the city of Tacoma Park's human rights heritage. Calls elected officials and residents alike to stand united to protect life and stop violence. And whereas, the city of Tacoma Park is committed to advancing a community of belonging through strengthening our resilience and racial equity practices. And whereas, the city of Tacoma Park advocates for peace and for the safety, dignity, freedom, and equality of all people, regardless of religion, race, or nationality, was one of the first cities in the US to declare itself a nuclear-free zone, prohibiting city contracts with or investments in nuclear weapons manufacture, passed a resolution opposing US military action in Iraq in 2002, passed a resolution condemning the invasion of Ukraine in 2022, and passed a resolution naming longtime resident Pat Lovelace a Tacoma Park peace delegate. And whereas, the city of Tacoma Park has taken an unequivocal stance against apartheid, passing a 1985 resolution calling for federal sanctions against South Africa, and a 1989 resolution establishing a city boycott on its corporate sponsors. South Africa believes Israel should be classified as an apartheid state and a Human Rights Watch investigation found Israel is committing crimes against humanity of apartheid and persecution against Palestinians. Whereas, the city of Tacoma Park recognizes that the current crisis in Palestine and Israel takes place within a long history and affirms that for a pathway to lasting peace and justice to be developed, the root causes of the crisis need to be addressed. And whereas, between October 7th, 2023, and I'm going to skip ahead because I won't have time for my section to be complete, there's a section around the state of Maryland's investments where we get money from the federal government, the amount of US military money. And whereas, the city of Tacoma Park and its residents of almost 9% live below the poverty line and need these dollars for housing, healthcare, childcare, et cetera. I'll stop there and pass it to my next colleague.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Michelle Ballinger. I'm from Ward Three and I'm going to continue with the resolution that myself and others submitted about a month ago. I'm going to dedicate the portion that I'm reading to the 104 Palestinians who were killed while they were trying to receive food aid last week. Whereas, there is worldwide support for an immediate ceasefire and the US stands alone as the only country in the UN to vote against the Intergovernmental Organization's December 8th resolution for an urgent humanitarian ceasefire. And Ra'sigal, an Israeli expert in modern genocide, called Israel's assault on Gaza "a textbook case of, quote, 'intent to commit genocide' and its rationalization of its violence "a, quote, 'shameful use of the lessons of the Holocaust.'" And whereas, South Africa filed an application on December 29th, 2023, formally accusing Israel of committing genocide against Palestinians. And on January 31st, 2024, the International Court of Justice, the UN's top court, found it plausible that Israel's acts could amount to genocide and issued six provisional measures, ordering Israel to take all measures within its power to prevent genocidal acts, including preventing and punishing incitement to genocide, ensuring aid and services reach Palestinians under siege in Gaza, and preserving evidence of crimes committed in Gaza. And whereas, the South African lawyers handling the genocide case against Israel at the ICJ are also preparing a separate lawsuit against the US and the UK for complicity in Zionist war crimes based on both governments enabling Israel to engage in international war crimes against the Palestinian people. And whereas, international organizations including the UN, the World Health Organization, USAID, the International Rescue Committee, and Amnesty International, unions such as the American Federation of Teachers, United Auto Workers, United Electrical Radio and Machine Workers of America, the Service Employees International Union 1199, National Nurses United, and Tacoma Park's elected representatives, including Congressman Jamie Raskin and Senator Chris Van Hollen, have made a call for ceasefire in order to prevent the further loss of life of civilians and to be in line with international humanitarian law. And whereas, the US deems the Israeli occupation of Palestinian territories unlawful under international law due to its permanence and the Israeli government's de facto annexation policies. And whereas, 68% of American voters support a ceasefire and want to see the US leverage its diplomatic relationships to, quote, "prevent further violence and civilian deaths." And millions of people worldwide, including thousands of people in Maryland, have joined in peaceful protests around the world and in Tacoma Park since October 7th to amplify this call. And whereas, the US, Maryland, and Tacoma Park have seen incidents of Islamophobia, antisemitism, anti-Palestinian, anti-Arab bigotry. And whereas, hundreds of thousands of Palestinian lives are at imminent risk of death if a lasting ceasefire is not achieved and humanitarian aid is not delivered without delay. And whereas, the federal government holds immense diplomatic and appropriations powers to save Palestinian and Israeli lives. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Katia Stitt and I live in Greater Tacoma Park. Now therefore, and I'm going to continue with the resolution. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Tacoma Park supports US Congress Resolution HR 786 and urges our congressional delegation, both in the Senate and the House of Representatives, to join us in demanding the Biden administration and Congress call for a permanent ceasefire in historic Palestine, which encompasses Gaza, West Bank, and Israel, an end to US aid and arms to Israel, lift the siege on Gaza, allowing immediate and sufficient lifesaving humanitarian aid to enter, the release of all hostages held in Israel and Gaza, the protection of all innocent civilians, the restoration of food, water, electricity, and medical supplies to Gaza, and into the occupation of Palestine, the respect for international law. And be it further resolved that the city of Tacoma Park supports Maryland House Joint Resolution 2 and urges our General Assembly delegation, both in the Senate and the House of Delegates, to support its condemnation of violations of international law, call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire, and commitment to combating bigotry. And be it further resolved that the city of Tacoma Park stands in clear support of the implementation of international law without exception and particularly when taxpayer monies are given and thus demanded that Congress and the executive branch hold Israel and themselves accountable to international law. And be it further resolved, the city of Tacoma Park urges the Biden administration to work for the release of all hostages held in Israel and Gaza, including the thousands of Palestinians detained by Israel. And be it further resolved, the city of Tacoma Park supports residents of all faiths and condemns Islamophobia and antisemitism. And be it further resolved that the city of Tacoma Park Council asks the clerk to quickly send copies of this resolution to the President of the United States, Tacoma Park's congressional delegation, state delegates and senators, as well as the governor, urging them to take immediate action by using their position and influence to help in Israel's assault on Gaza. One of the worst assaults, and really a genocide, one of the worst assaults, that's not in the resolution, by the way, on any civilian population in our time and age. And I would just close with saying, you know, that if you all know Gil Scott-Heron, he said the revolution will be televised. What's being televised right now is a genocide. And our voices need to be added to the chorus to stop it. And week after week, we've sat here and you've said you're going to take it under advisement, find language, et cetera. So hopefully tonight is the night we'll get some sort of feedback from you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Barnes. I live in Ward Five. I was here last week, as unprepared as I am tonight. But I ran down when I saw that you all were accepting comments again. My daughter had her wisdom teeth out this morning. I work full-time and I hadn't meeting until 8:00. This is extremely important to me and to my family. I mentioned last week, I come from a long line of Orthodox rabbis. I have family in Israel. I talked about how this is a straight-up land grab, that same type that went on at the beginning, founding of this nation, doing whatever was necessary to get the people who lived here out of the way to take the land and the resources. Same deal. It's wrong. It's not complicated. I am grateful to hear from my friend that this is on the agenda for next week. A lot of us obviously are quite happy to help with whatever needs to be done to get the resolution in place. I guess I would like to talk a little bit about accountability. Hearing that it is on the agenda is great. You have a lot of people here who really want to see this happen urgently, for good reason, which they've spelled out week after week after week. There are, of course, some residents here who are very uncomfortable with the idea of ceasefire resolution and I hope their concerns can be addressed in a way that is still doing what is morally right from the perspective of most residents and being accountable to the people who live here. It's important for Tacoma Park to join the other cities around the nation sending a message to our state and to our national leadership that you're accountable to your citizens and that they should be as well. I attended a hearing this week for Maryland, the Maryland Resolution. We had four speakers against that resolution. They were all from organizations that are, you know, old-school, AIPAC-type Zionist organizations. We had somewhere between 60 and 80 Marylanders ask for the resolution to be, however they worded it, taken under positive consideration. 60 to 80 people who showed up in the middle of a workday on 48 hours' notice. Who knows how many people would have come if they had had proper notice of that meeting? So it's clear, the people here want this, the people of Maryland want this, and it's clear that the people of America want this. 67% of all Americans and 90 or 80-some-odd percent of all Democrats want a ceasefire now. It's urgent. So in terms of accountability to citizens as elected representatives, I think you're safe to move forward with this. Use us, let us help you get this done next week. Please use the last 10 seconds of my time to let us know if there are things we don't know about that are stopping you.
Thank you. We don't respond during public comment periods. Do we have any other general public comments?
The first comment is you should respond to public comments. Tom Gagliardo, "I live in Tacoma Park. I'm a citizen like you are of the world." "The ceasefire resolution that I heard discussed tonight is a humanitarian call for peace and justice. Whether you agree with all the wherethes or not, that's what it is. And it is not a political declaration. You are not being asked to declare your support for one state or two, or whether the 1948 UN green-lined border should be honored or if Israeli settlements should remain and continue to be built in the West Bank. The resolution we seek," I'm not sure who I mean when I say "we," but I think what I'm saying is reflective of other speakers, "is a plea to save lives, children's lives, elderly lives, women's lives, lives of civilians, and to avoid slaughter and starvation. That's what it means to be an ethical leader. You stand for those things. Only a few years ago, my friends, neighbors in Tacoma Park, no doubt some of you on the dais, and I stood in solidarity against antisemitism following the brutal massacre of Jews who had been worshiping at their synagogue. At that gathering, I bumped into my friend Ron Landsman. He asked why I was there, and I said, 'For you.' Last week, I stood in the cold and rain with many of the same friends and neighbors outside of this building, the Sam Abbott Citizen Center, to urge you, our elected representatives, to pass a ceasefire resolution. I was there for my neighbor, Leanna Smith, and her daughter Gabby Hadad. As you've already heard, Gabby, at this very moment, despite the danger, is working in the West Bank. Whether it's called the West Bank in Gaza, the occupied territories, Judea and Samaria, or Israel and Palestine, it is the same land. It is the same people and the same conditions. It is the Levant. What people, regardless of nationality, ethnicity, or politics, call the Holy Land. It is the Holy Land for Jews, for Muslims, for Christians. But it is also a holy land of tragedy, where everyone has a grievance. And all the grievances are real. It's been a month. Stop stalling. Start talking to us. Tell us where you stand. Pass the resolution. Thank you."
Good evening. Sachi Venikle Kalsa, Ward Two. I'm here to ask you to support passing a ceasefire resolution and I'm glad to hear that it's on the agenda for next week. And I'm disappointed that it took so long to get here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other general public comments?
My name is Jaclyn Moore and I live in Ward Two. A friend of mine received a disturbing text message from the Ward Six council member on Thursday, February 29th, 2024, in response to my February 28th, 2024 council comments. For those who missed my comments, I requested that the mayor and council add language to the city's municipal code that defines professionalism and provides remedies for elected officials and staff who choose not to conduct themselves in a professional manner. As you will hear in a moment, the text is one more example of trying to discourage public participation and doing the opposite of the city council's stated priority of a commitment to being a welcoming and inclusive community where all residents experience a sense of belonging. I will now read verbatim the unedited content of council member Small's text message. "Man, I plead with my homie that she's going to get lasered every time she comes and prior to demonstrate her profound lack of understanding of government apparatuses. Whereas, I have no ambitions other than a horizontally-focused working local government. It's not lost on me what happens when ignorance is displayed near me. Pettiness, stupidity, you tend to turn from anti-hero to hero on accident. And since I saved you approximately 15K in fees on the short side, and really did, not her despite what she tells the old X like your actual pocket, notwithstanding the court of public opinion he intended to excoriate you with, I'd ask her not to keep proving exactly what I'm saying. I just wanted speed bumps. And since now everyone is lying and I hate that, I'd even tell your powers that be that you're certain I'm coming if they do not stand down and stop biting my rhymes, because rhymes are mine. She's just a sucker MC in a pair of Calvin Klein's, coming from the wackest part of town, trying to rap, but she can't get down. After the song I post, there shall he no further warnings about our shared disquiet. At the end of the text, there's a link to Run DMC's Sucker MCs. In the future, I request that council member Small contact me directly if he has anything to say, rather than taking the coward's path and going through my friends. City Clerk Carpenter has my email address. Council member Small's warning regarding my getting lasered by him and that I should stand down are further proof that if this mayor and council choose not to change the charter language to include clear definitions of and consequences for unprofessional behavior, you all will continue to look foolish and ineffective. The brush of unprofessionalism has painted and tainted all of you. How can any resident take you seriously if you allow one council member to go so far out of bounds? I'm not shutting up or standing down, and I've never owned a pair of Calvin Klein's. This isn't the right kind of mic, but..." Mic drop.
Do we have any other general public comments?
Mayor, before I start, just want to confirm how much time I have? Okay.
Okay. That's fine.
And first, my apologies to everyone who has spoken tonight. I'm here to talk about a street safety issue, but it's not because I don't care about what's going on around the world. My father was very active in trying to build bridges between Jews and Christians. He was the founding director of an institute for that purpose. He wrote a book about Abraham Joshua Heschel, the civil rights leader, and a few years before he died, discovered that his own father was Jewish, something he always wondered about but didn't know until the DNA results came back. So all of what people have been describing tonight touches me as well. Two weeks ago, I came to ask for your assistance in getting some changes made to Grant Avenue, which is right outside our door. I live nearby. And I described an accident that had happened that day when a truck went the wrong way on Grant and entered Carroll Avenue. At that time, I didn't have the advanced opportunity to submit the video which I made that day. So I'd like to show you the video I shot that day of what happened when that truck went the wrong way and entered the intersection. truck went the wrong way and entered the intersection. The truck took down a couple communications lines, Verizon and Pepco had to come out. The police were called to the scene. They shut down three of the four lanes in the junction, making it impossible for many vehicles, including this bus, to get through the junction, and so this bus had to be redirected around the Harpin Turn at BY Morrison Park. It was very difficult for the bus to do, and it was just a, it was a, something that could have had much worse results. No one was killed, no one was hurt. It was just a complete deadlock in the junction. The problem is that this was predictable. That was my testimony. This was predictable because Grant Avenue is broken. It was turned into a one-way street years ago, and that has created an unending series of problems. What I have asked for is better signage on that road. My request for that has fallen, has been in vain, I'm afraid to say. There is nothing telling you when you approach Grant Avenue from Carroll that you are beginning a one-way journey down that street. A sign saying "begin one way" would be very helpful, as would signs on the opposite side of those poles saying "do not enter," so that anybody who does happen to come up the wrong way knows better than to try to enter Carroll the way that truck did. And there are other issues along the street. What the city has done is ask the police department to come out and ticket people who are going the wrong way. And to me, that's the wrong response, because that's criminalizing behavior that is predictable, that the city itself bears some responsibility for through the poor engineering of this street, including the lack of signage. We created an unworkable situation, and now we're going to ticket people for getting caught in an unworkable situation or misunderstanding what's going on? We should take some responsibility for making Grant work, and I'm happy to talk with anybody about how to make it work, because it doesn't work now. Don't take my word for it. Listen to Ed Welch, the crossing guard.
Very much of a challenge, but very much afraid it's going to be a serious accident waiting to happen, because we also have a county school bus to come across this intersection and sign down Grant. And one car coming up here one way sits down eventually when it happens. One afternoon, somebody come up one way, and the bus is going to come right around there and hit them. We want to be able to stop.
Thank you so much.
Do we have any other general public comments in the room this evening? Okay, we're going to move to our virtual comments. Do we have any commenters online?
We do have one or two. Okay, we have Tierney Acosta.
Hi, this is me. I'm Tierney Acosta. I go to school at Ward, Montgomery College, Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus. I am the president of the Propiculture Club on campus, and we are working in tandem with the Tacoma Park Climate Act Coffee Club and the Tacoma Park Food Force Group. And this Saturday and Sunday, March 9th and 10th, we are having a workday on the campus of Tacoma Park Silver Spring, Montgomery College, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's going to be UIOG, so bring your own gloves. Sorry, we're working on it with budgeting. And the address is Pavilion 4, which is 7710 Chicago Avenue, Silver Spring, Maryland, 20910. It should be very fun, and I hope if anyone's, they can reach out to myself or anyone else at Montgomery College, like Kim McGeady in the Provost's office, we can direct you towards our signup. And also, hi, councilmembers, I'm there.
Great. Thank you so much.
We have one other speaker, Tim Cooper. Is Tim Cooper on the line? Yeah, I think he's here to speak, yes, for Terrell.
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, how you doing, Ms. Carpenter and councilmembers? Well, I just wanted, I didn't want to take up too much time. I just wanted to just go back over the request that we was asking for the city to help us with the Juneteenth event with the moon bounces and, you know, having a stage and entertainment. Just trying to get y'all help as much as possible to make this event great. I'm not sure if this is part of the alignment for today, but just wanted to reach out to you all again, let y'all know how much interested we are in y'all helping us. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other virtual comments? Wonderful. So we are going to move on to, just make sure, council comments. Let's just make sure that, excellent. All right.
I'd like to raise the official point of order that my button was passed first on this.
I can see that, Councilmember Small. I would like to ask for all of my colleagues this evening to stick to the three minutes in order to ensure that we're able to get to the remaining items on the agenda. So again, per council procedures, I'm asking for members of council to stick to your three minutes. Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mayor. The only difficulty with the three-minute thing is that I got to talk a little fast, so I apologize. Yeah, yesterday's my birthday, it's March 5th. It is also the day of the Boston massacre. There are ironies about that, particularly if you're a little kid who is like a genius and the actual school district was getting money to have a cohort of kids go around with you and get paid, because, you know, you learn things, they give you the library for your end of the library early, you know, you get some diction on your side and whatever. I've been smart long enough, smart and black long enough, to know that if you're not on my side, you find me precocious, and if you are on my side, you think it's pretty amazing that this even is happening. One of the things about that, and so I'll begin with this, let's just do a little history. On March 5th, 1770, the inevitable happened. A mob of about 60 angry townspeople descended upon the guard with the Customs House. When the reinforcements were called, the crowd became more unruly, hurling rocks and snowballs at the guard and reinforcements. In the heat of the confusing melee, the British fired without Captain Preston's command. Imperial bullets took the lives of five men, including Christmas Attucks, a former slave. The fatal 5th of March can never be forgotten. The horrors of that dreadful night are but too deeply impressed upon our hearts. Language is too feeble to paint the emotions of our souls. When our streets were stained with the blood of our brethren, when our hearts were wounded by the groans of the dying, and our eyes were tormented with the sight of the mangled bodies of the dead, when our alarmed imagination presented to our view the houses wrapped in flames, our children subjected to the barbarous caprice of the raging soldiery, our beauteous virgins exposed to the insolence of unbridled passion, our virtuous wives endeared to us by every tender tie, rather, falling a sacrifice to worse-than-brutal violence, and perhaps, like the famed Lucretia, distracted with anguish and despair, ending their wretched lives by their own fair hands. Now, you know, here's the other thing about that, like I've come up in life, I like the blues, I like rap music, I like a lot of things, and it is my solace. As a matter of fact, I'm in such pain tonight that I am listening to music in and out of this room to kind of stimulate my fascia, because it actually is a sort of a thing. But the funny thing about it is, you come up with things, and like serving sucker MCs. You also come up with things like maxims of yourself, which is "don't run into rocks." And that is a thing that I learned about dramatic irony and hubris when I was in high school in the gifted and talented class, and that is, you know, like sometimes pride really does go with before fall. And, you know, one of the things about being sick is that mindfulness is omnipresent to someone who's in constant pain. And so I would leave you with the very end of the wonderful book by Chester Hyams called "My Life of Absurdity."
Councilmember Small, your three minutes are up.
Oh, I got just a little bit left. It's just one little bitty quote. "There is an indomitable quality within the human spirit that cannot be destroyed, a face deep within the human personality that is impregnable to all assaults. We would be drooling idiots, dangerous maniacs, raving beasts, if it were not for that quality enforced within all humans that cries, 'I will live.'"
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Councilmember Gibson?
First, I just want to say that thanks for all the folks that spoke today, tonight, and I, as the mayor has indicated, there will be a resolution to discuss next week, and I'm looking forward to that. Been looking forward to it for a few weeks. It's not easy, but it is about time. A couple of announcements, past announcements, a very impressive LIDC, Low-Impact Development Center Stormwater Resiliency briefing was held earlier this week, and I would encourage everyone to go onto the city's website, Stormwater Resiliency, it will be posted there if it hasn't already been. I note, if I'm not mistaken, that the next step will involve a focus on a specific project in Ward 3, I think, perhaps among others, but that was a great presentation. I want to remind folks, or just alert folks, that the county's PHP Committee, Planning, Housing, and Parks, proceeded with its minor master plan process with very little recognition of all, at all of our county executives' notes about the traffic study and an upcoming racial equity analysis. It was just blown right past. And third, I want to say that thanks to Ward 3 residents, something around 200 of you, of us, completed a survey about budget and service priorities, and I did a breakdown, a summary of that, which I've sent out earlier today. I'm really, really pleased to have that kind of input. It is by no means a scientifically rigorous survey, but it's a useful one. One of the things that I noted, one finding was that approximately 20%, said that taxes had a significant negative impact on their ability or their desire to remain in Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Hanzak?
Thank you. I was going to read a list of names, if in case that runs over, I'm asking if I may have the grace of reading the names. Thank you so much to the mayor and the city manager for coming out for the walk and talk last Sunday. The residents who came out, including Jackie Fraser, resident and director of Lunch and Learn, Linnea Lynn of Enterprise, Roxane Yamashita of Small Things Matter, Jamie Awugo, who runs the Roanoke Pantry, and Christina Perez of MHP and Discover Long Branch. I'm just so grateful for that walk. I think we got a lot done in looking at the neighborhood together. I also want to thank everyone who came out over the last five weeks in particular. It's deeply meaningful to me. I'm going to leave it to the fact that next week, we will be working on a resolution, and I'm pleased to hear it. And thank you, Ziggy, for the invitation that we didn't quite get in our hands, but I heard you loud and clear. I appreciated the progress that's been made on stormwater to date. I was able to attend with Councilmember Gibson and Councilmember DeBala last night. It was an excellent session. I encourage people to listen to it. Today, also, I met with a group of high school-age teenagers in Ward 5 at our main bus stop to invite them to consider applying for our Police Advisory Council. I was super pleased that at least five of them indicated some interest. As the police chief has said to me, "It would be great to have someone from Ward 5," and I couldn't agree more. I also took the opportunity to discuss current events with this large group of diverse local youth from our community, and told them some of the issues that are before us right now about Gaza and Israel. And I was extremely interested in hearing their input, and I just want to share that with you, because I also believe that in addition to hearing all of you come out to talk to us, we must go out and talk to our residents, and our youth are the future of our community, and their voices really matter to me. And finally, I want to talk about Women's History Month. In honor of International Women's Day and Women's History Month, I want to recognize all the women and girls in our city, and particularly those among our city staff and here on the city council. I am proud to serve with all of you. Also, I particularly want to recognize women in our police force, a job that historically has been the domain of men. I am so proud to be part of a city whose police force has committed itself to the 30-by-30 pledge, which states that we are committed to having 30% of our sworn officers be women by the year 2030. As of now, 18% of Tacoma Park sworn staff are women, and 38% of our workforce are women. Nationally, only 12% of all police officers in the US are women. That growing number is a testament to the fact that we're moving in the right direction. Last night, I was thrilled to see our city promote multiple, highly skilled officers to new positions, including one female officer, Michelle Holmes, who's now the second, only the second female captain ever in our city's history. And if you'll indulge me, Mayor, in reading out these names, and just one more thing, Councilmember Fulcher, at last night's ceremony for our police, said she iterated the importance to our city of both recruiting and maintaining our female officers in-house, and so I would like to read their names to you. Our sworn female staff include Captain Michelle Holmes, Lieutenant Cynthia Williams, Corporal Cindya Torres, Corporal Teresa Bolanos, Officer, pardon me if I don't say your name correctly, Chole Haller Kaplan, DET, I'm sorry, can someone help me with that?
Detective.
Detective, thank you. Detective Janelle Lane, of course, Cadet Alexa Lozama, and our civilian female staff, Kathy Plevy, Gudelia Savedra, Naisha Brown, Danielle Gallup, Kathy Maske, Misha Rowe, Favin Teklu, Lydia Teklu, Diana Garcia, Chris La Flores, Demetrius White, Emma Garcia Reyes, and our crossing guards, Liz James, Donna Warren, Harriet Saxton, and Pamela Sprouse. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Hanzak. Councilmember Fulcher?
Thank you. It was important to me to allow time for a wide spectrum of opinions to be heard in this space before a formal response came from the council. There is discrimination against Jewish people and Islamic people in our community. Everyone should have an expectation and a right to feel safe and to be safe locally and internationally. I was reading about a study from the Institute for Social Policy and Understanding, and it found that the relationship between Muslim and Jewish Americans can be tied to their shared experiences with discrimination. It found that Jewish respondents scored the lowest on the Islamophobia- on the Islamophobia Index in 2022, which measures how much someone adheres to the five prevalent stereotypes of Muslims. After the 2016 presidential election, Muslim and Jewish Americans experienced the highest level of fear of violence from white supremacist groups. Please continue to make room for each other's pain and fear. I don't expect that we will find a compromise in this room that will be supported by everyone, but I hope you will continue to humanize each other when you don't agree with each other and to listen to each other. I've heard from people that support a resolution and those who do not support a resolution. Most seem to agree, whether they support a resolution or not, that a negotiated ceasefire and humanitarian aid are necessary. I am looking forward to supporting a resolution on a negotiated ceasefire. I am pro-peace and I support humanitarian aid. I appreciate the work that is being done by others to bring peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fulter. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight to share your opinions with us. And I also wanted to take a minute to congratulate my colleague on his recent birthday. So belated happy birthday to Councilmember Small. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Dibala?
Stole my thunder on the birthday.
Oh, yeah, you come back now.
My turn. Happy birthday. Two things. I wanted to, I also want to thank everybody who's come out over the last few weeks and to thank everyone for trying really hard to uphold what we all seem to believe are Tacoma Park values, that we, that all residents are welcome, that are all heard, and they're all treated with equal respect, including amongst all of us here, as hard as it is on some issues. So I really appreciate that. And for what else I was going to say, I'll just go with what you said. And on another completely, a completely different note, during the break, I'd like to see who's going to the National League of Cities meetings this next week and see if we can coordinate about transport and so forth. That's it for me today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fulter, did you have?
I'm sorry, I just have one last thing to add. My Girl Scout daughter, who is graduating from high school this year, she's holding an art show with a theme of inclusivity. It will be at the corner of Laurel and Carroll this weekend. It's part of her Gold Award as a Girl Scout. So I hope that you'll, you know, do your farmer's market run and come and check out some art made by youth in the area with a theme of inclusivity. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, point of order, I'd just like to say that Christmas addicts was, the killer of Christmas addicts was exonerated by James Adam, former, or future president, John Adams, rather. And he said that it was because he's just big, black, and unruly-looking. And why wouldn't you have shot him?
Okay, all right. Well, I just want to join my colleagues in appreciation of folks that have come out. I know that it feels like week after week, let's take it so long, let's take it so long. One of the things that I've appreciated over the last few weeks is hearing from you all and hearing your stories and hearing what you're sharing in terms of your resolution language, speaking to various rabbis and speaking to experts on the matter and people who have passed ceasefire statements and understanding some of the complexities of the issues and how we can, through our resolution, ensure that it's applicable. We do multiple things. Connect what's going on in Israel and Palestine to the families in our community and how it impacts the most. Call for peace, which is what we all, especially here in the city of Tacoma Park, strive to ensure happens. But also make sure that we are doing our due diligence in terms of what is as clearly as we can, what that peace looks like. And so, as was mentioned, we will have a resolution that we're voting on next week. But it will be posted by the end of this week, so folks can take a look. I think the biggest thing is making sure that we're providing that balanced view, calling for the release of hostages, calling for bilateral ceasefire, and calling for the desperately needed humanitarian aid in Gaza. It's something that we are really, really, really pushing for. And then, you know, really, 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 more importantly than anything, reaffirming our commitment as a city of creating a place of welcoming where antisemitism, xenophobia, Islamophobia will not be tolerated here. I feel so, so, so fortunate to be the mayor of the city of Tacoma Park, although sometimes, you know, it's hard. But to have the opportunity to learn from you all and strive for great heights is what we on this council have been working really hard to do. And I don't think people fully understand the amount of behind-the-scenes conversations we've had to have to even get to this point. But we are very fortunate that residents have come out and shared their passion. And we appreciate you all, and we appreciate, even though I haven't been able to respond to all the emails, I will tell you, I have read and I've learned from each and every one of you. So I want to thank you all very much for coming out. I was this weekend a lot of places. So just want to thank the Washington Adventures University leaderships. I had an opportunity to participate in their donors brunch on Sunday and to just have a chance to fellowship with Dr. Spence. So I appreciate his invitation and the opportunity I had to come out there. And I really, really, really want to thank the Ward 5 residents and Councilmember Hanzak for organizing the walk. It was such a great way to spend, how many hours? Like, three hours, three and a half hours? Walking around Ward 5, but not only, you know, the walk, but to be able to engage with the residents and to see firsthand what is impacting your neighborhoods. I want to, I enjoyed it so much that I do want to encourage my colleagues, if, and when the weather's, when the weather's good. If there is, if you all would like to schedule walks with myself, or I'm going to sign up, the city manager, with residents, so that we have an opportunity to just walk around and see some of the things that are impacting your residents, please, 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 just let us know. And I would love the opportunity to walk around and take notes of all of the things. Ward 2, I'm down, I'm down. But making sure that we're able to take that laundry list. I told Councilmember Hanzak, I said, I have a whole list of what happened, what we found out on Sunday that I want to make sure that we're able to follow up on. So I want to encourage my colleagues to do the same. And with that, because I'm over time and I'm trying to stick to the three minutes.
Point of order, I find dramatic irony humorous as well. That's why I was smiling.
And so, Councilmember, Councilmember Gibson?
Thirty seconds. I just forgot to mention, I think it's next Tuesday at 7:00 p.m. we're having a solar, solar event. What's the exact name of it? I'm not sure. But learn about putting up solar on your houses and the background of doing it. And there'll be a panel, I will be one of those. And please come, 7 o'clock, I think it's here.
I think it is.
Yeah, so, please come. It's, you know.
I think the city manager has that info in his comments, correct? Perfect, all right. So with that, I'll turn things over to the city manager to provide comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of council and guests. From the HCD, the Housing and Community Development Department, the County Council Committee on Planning, Housing and Parks finished their third and final work session on the minor master plan on Monday, March 4. The county council will review the plan later in March. The city website has links to the video and staff reports associated with it. The Tacoma Park tenant survey is now live. Renters are encouraged to complete the survey, which should take five to 10 minutes to complete and will help inform city policies and programs. A link to the survey will be included in tomorrow's city manager comments posted on the city website. Staff successfully defended a Commission on Landlord Tenant Affairs order in court that will continue and will continue to work with the city attorney's office to protect the rights of tenants who seek relief from the commission. On March 5, the request for a proposal concerning the Houston Avenue Stormwater Treatment Project was posted on the city's website. The deadline is 2:00 p.m. on April 4. Please see the link in tomorrow's posted comments for more information on that. Next Thursday, March 14, from 7:30 to 9:30 p.m., the Tacoma Park Arts Series is hosting Tacoma Arts Interfaith Comedy Show here in the city auditorium. In an age of polarization and angry debate, the comedians of interfaith comedy are sharing laughs with a side of understanding about various religions. Five comedians from different religious backgrounds will share their talents in a free stand-up show. No tickets or reservations are required, but donations will be accepted. From the Public Works Department, and as Councilmember Gibson alluded, please join the upcoming Go Solar Tacoma Park event on Tuesday, March 12, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. here in the city auditorium. This information will educate all residents, both renters and homeowners, about obtaining solar energy for their home. It will feature details on the upcoming solar co-op campaign with Solar United Neighbors. It will offer information on community solar from Neighborhood Sun, S-U-N, and information on clean energy options overall. This will be an interactive event for anyone interested in or thinking about or planning for solar installations. This is a free event. Registration is not required, but is encouraged. An option to join the event online is also available. A link will be posted with tomorrow's comments online. And thank you also to Councilmember Gibson for serving as a panelist for this event. From the city manager's office, in the weeks since I have started here, among many other things, I've observed and assessed what I believe would be the most productive executive-administrative structure that will most effectively serve the mayor and council, this organization, and our residents. Therefore, I wish to announce publicly that it is my intention to proceed immediately with a two-deputy city manager structure. Mr. David Eubanks will assist me with externally facing city departments and activities. And Mr. Andrew Bolduc will focus on internal department and support activities. We can all be proud of these two gentlemen's excellent service this past year, and I'm excited about how we three will work as a team now and have begun to work as a team. The reason they're not present tonight, by the way, is that they're working on the proposed budget. No surprise. Absolutely. You can applaud one more time with this next announcement. I also wish to announce publicly that I will be promoting Mr. Ira Cowler to the role of Permanent Director of Housing and Community Development. Ira has performed very well this past year in the acting HCD director role while still covering his economic development duties. He has the enthusiastic support of his department staff, works quite well with the senior leadership team, and has earned this opportunity, in my opinion. His knowledge of planning, housing, and economic development in particular, coupled with his productivity, will continue to serve us well. He will report to Deputy City Manager Eubanks. Finally, from two departments, some employee highlights. From the Recreation Department, we would like to highlight the exemplary work from Haven Rod, team manager within the Recreation Department. She has stepped up to cover shifts in the teen lounge during the absence of part-time staff to ensure that teens have a safe place to go after school each day. Her dedication and hard work did not go unnoticed. We appreciate her for going above and beyond to ensure the teen lounge continues to operate smoothly while also meeting deadlines for her general tasks. Her commitment to residents and especially teens is truly commendable. And we are grateful to have such a dedicated employee on staff. Thank you, Haven, for your flexibility, your willingness to take on extra shifts, and for always putting our teens first. Thank you once and again, once again, for your outstanding work, Haven. And from the Finance Department, we would like to bring our accounting supervisor, Kiroz Alum Segid, to your attention due to his exceptional performance and dedication to our city since 2006, when he joined our department as an accounting assistant, then steadily climbed the ranks to accounting supervisor, which he attained in 2015. Throughout his tenure, Kiroz has consistently demonstrated outstanding commitment to his work and has provided exemplary customer service to both internal and external stakeholders. His dedication to his role is evident in his willingness to always go above and beyond to assist others. Kiroz has maintained a positive and approachable demeanor, even on the toughest of days, always greeting colleagues and clients with a smile. His calm demeanor and unwavering professionalism have significantly contributed to maintaining a positive work environment within the finance team. Kiroz's primary responsibilities include overseeing daily payment reconciliations across multiple systems, including three credit card systems and the cashiering system. Additionally, he plays a crucial role in managing payroll and tax payments. He supervises three staff members within the finance team and serves as the go-to person for all daily activities, including accounts receivable and cashiering. Even amidst the challenges posed by the COVID-19 pandemic, Kiroz has remained dedicated and hardworking, often going the extra mile to ensure that essential financial operations continue seamlessly. In recognition of his exceptional performance, dedication, and unwavering commitment to serving the city and its residents, we commend Kiroz for his outstanding contributions. Thank you, and that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you very much. And I just want to take an opportunity to just point out the common theme across all of the promotions and the folks that have been recognized tonight in terms of our city staff. And it's the fact that we have so many people that have been carrying the load of multiple positions and filling in the gaps during this time of transition. And I cannot stress enough how appreciative I am of our city staff, our city manager's office. It's a dream team now, and I'm so excited about the fact that we have both David and Andrew along with you, Robert. I think it's one of the best things we could have right now in terms of making sure that we're providing adequate coverage of all of the important topics that are happening. And Ira, thank you so much. I know you've been doing like three jobs for the last year or so, and the fact that you continue to do it with a smile and carry us through so much. And Haven, as well as Kiroz, I cannot stress enough how grateful I am for our city staff. And so, thank you so much for this segment of the meeting because I think it's important for not only members of council but for the community to hear about the wonderful work that our staff do.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to move on to the next item. Do folks need a break? I'm like, we can't power through these five-minute votes? All right, fine, peer pressure, more than two. All right, we're going to take a break until, let's do a 10-minute break. So we'll be back at 9:25. Thank you all so much. Thank you all so much.
Okay. Because this is a second, a single reading ordinance authorizing a contract with the clerk. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Fulter?
Yes.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Hansak?
Yes.
Councilmember Small? Mayor Circe?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to our second voting item. The first reading ordinance amending the city code to ban combustible engine-powered leaf blowers. Would someone like to move it?
Moved.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dibala. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Fulter. Are there any questions or points for discussion?
I have a comment from our work group.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak.
Okay. I was part of a work group with Councilmember Dibala and Councilmember Fulter that works on committees of the council. And the work group that addresses the committees wanted to share a brief update as it relates indirectly to the draft code amendment language that's been put forward on combustion-powered leaf blowers. The draft code amendment makes reference to the city's existing noise control board as one mechanism for its implementation. And the purpose of the noise control board is to adjudicate noise complaints submitted by at least two residents from different households. The current council work group has been reviewing several city committee issues over the last year, and it's become apparent that the city's existing noise control board has received very few two-party noise complaints over the years and has had even fewer hearings before the board. No new members have been recruited or appointed by our work group, and current appointments are lapsing, and we wanted everyone to be aware of that. As such, and prior to last week's draft code being put forward, the work group had been in discussions with the Montgomery County Conflict Resolution Center to explore the modality of partnering with them to address noise complaints. And this would serve as an alternative to relying on the city's noise control board. Meanwhile, the work group has also reached out to MML to learn more about what mechanisms other Maryland cities utilize to effectively address noise complaints, and we're still reading some of the things that they've sent to us. City staff and we are still in the process of discussing that modality of using the Council Conflict Resolution Center for future noise issues that might require the NCB. And in the meantime, we don't see any reason for the vote to be delayed because there are other mechanisms written into this draft code that allow for full implementation. Also, there are still several months before the code would come into full effect, meaning that if any changes were helpful, we could adjust the code accordingly. If anyone has any questions about that, please let us know right now.
Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to vote against this, and the reason for this is primarily because I really do believe this is a racist law. The people who work in Tacoma Park and take care of people's lawns would like to do that in the most efficient manner possible so that they can actually make money. The fact that we would even say that this is a quiet use and enjoyment issue to me is facile. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Councilmember Dibala?
Thank you. First, let me just address that because last week we did talk about it at some length in the county's equity analysis about how they and we are approaching the very real concerns of smaller business contractors that have to work on a very close margin is outlined in that in fair detail. And I would like to say that once we have this passed, one of the things I was going to ask for was whether there could be somebody, perhaps the city manager, along with me, working with the county council to make sure that their funds set aside for rebates for small business contractors.
So what you're saying then basically is that...
Councilmember Small, you have not been acknowledged.
I thought we were having a colloquy. She said that we were having a colloquy.
I would like to finish my sentence first. Thank you. To make sure that we, that our contractors are aware of this, are covered, and reached out to by both the county and the city. Because that's, I think that's important to several of the council members based on the discussion we had last week. What I was gonna say originally was that I'm pleased that we are here. It's been a topic that's been discussed on and off for many years, as many of you know. It doesn't have a lot of climate impact. It does have other impacts that people are looking for, and it has this equity twist that it has taken a while. I'm glad we waited for the county because of the rebate program there. So that was, I was just gonna say, I'm in support of this, and I'm glad we're doing it.
Councilmember Gibson?
I just wanted to mention that I've spoken briefly with Mr. Cowler about the possibility of raising the, or lowering the maximum decibel to what we have for the rest of our noise ordinance to sixty-five. And we've only agreed that there would be some discussion with our city attorney about the possibility of doing that. In other words, we have an umbrella, if I understand correctly, correct me, that we have an umbrella noise ordinance that cites sixty-five, but this, there was an exception made for leaf blowers because they make more, you know, make more noise. I don't see any reason to keep that exception, especially since we're moving to electric.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Hansak?
Okay. I, we did have some conversation about this last week. There is the survey that the county has put out about the rebate program that's in Spanish and English, and I know for a fact that several of the landscapers that work in Ward Five are Spanish-speaking, don't really speak much English, and that greatly concerns me. I'm also concerned about the availability and accessibility of people who need to have battery packs, for example, as they go out and do their work each day and might need to recharge those. My own experience with our, you know, electric mowers is that it takes quite a long time to charge them sometimes. And I just want to make sure that if folks are living, for example, in apartment buildings, that there are plenty of opportunities for electrification of those battery packs available to them, and plenty of battery packs, not just one or two, that would be available. So I guess what I am saying, and I think I partially said this last week, is I would very much welcome partnering with the city to go out and hand-deliver the sort of Spanish surveys out in areas where I know there are a number of people who rely on that for their income and livelihood, and also, and make sure we get the feedback from the county about how they're proposing to resolve all of that through their rebate program, whether it's multiple battery packs or whatever. I assume some of that will be adaptive since there's some time built in. And I'd like us to make sure we dig into that data as we move forward and make sure we set aside funds, as Councilmember Dibala said, to make sure that's going to work as well as possible.
Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say that essentially then what we are saying here tonight is that we are passing a law in which we are going to constrain the economic opportunity of people, particularly poor people, because not all the people who I know who use gas power blowers use them as Hispanic people. Sometimes, poor black people use them. Sometimes, people who don't have regular jobs only go out every now and then to use them. And you are saying that you are requiring those people to upgrade their technology for your benefit when there is no environmental benefit for it. And I want to be clear that you know that that's what you're saying. Thank you.
Councilmember Fulter?
Councilmember Hansak and I talked a while about this code change, and what we were talking about was the importance of making sure that people were educated about it. And at the time, we didn't understand that the onus is on the homeowner to be educated about this, that it's gonna fall on the homeowner to make sure that they're in compliance. But I just wanna kind of piggyback off of what she's saying, that we need to make sure that there's a lot of education and that we're hitting the areas and making sure that education on the rebate program in Montgomery County. And so I would appreciate if the city would put some resources into making sure that as many people as were able to have know about it in Tacoma Park are able to find out about it.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes, thank you. I was just going to point out that this also applies to multifamily properties and that many of the people who run these machines eight hours a day, six days a week, are also breathing all sorts of stuff. So it is, to me, an environmental and health issue for everyone, but especially for the people who use these machines business-wise. And so I think there are pros and cons, and clearly people should vote how they want to. But I see environmental and health benefits as well as economic constraints which are, as much as can be done, being compensated through a rebate program for purchasing.
Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. Insofar as the larger matrix of doing business as a small business in the county is that there are lots of things about it that are prohibitively high in cost. And given the fact that I have talked before about chunky data and slick wording, I'd just like to say again that the basis of which you guys are doing this is a matrix that was designed by people who didn't want it to happen anyway, that doesn't include the poorest people who do these things, and generally speaking, doesn't take any consideration that if your life is pretty cheap, you maybe don't necessarily care as much about the fumes as the money in your pocket. Insofar as all of those things are true, I would like to say that I encourage everyone to vote their conscience and not to feel like they are required by any sort of boundaries, dictates, or decorum to achieve a consensus on an issue that is unseemingly ignorant.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. I will say, you know, one of the things that is not necessarily germane to the city is the county's move towards the ban of the sale of gas-powered leaf blowers. And so one of the things that is really important, as I see it, is ensuring that city law is in alignment with the county-wide ban, and ensuring that there is an ability for us to, one, make sure that there's some alignment, but more importantly, ensure that we are moving into the direction of being able to leverage the resources of the county in order to ensure the effective implementation of this leaf blower ban. So with that...
I would like to say one more point of order, and that is that if you're going to do that, I would encourage you to consider putting in some language about pawn shops and the inability of using a third-party leaf blower, because usually people who are trying to make a quick buck with the opportunity of people who don't have time to come and do their yard, they often go to the pawn shop, and the cheapest ones and the most effective ones are gonna be gas-powered.
Interesting point. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Dibala? Okay. Do you have a question? Otherwise, we're gonna move to the vote.
I did, but I think I've just forgotten what it was because I was thinking about pawn shops.
All right.
Give me a minute. Wanting to point out just one other thing to consider, which is that if Tacoma Park does not do this, we are right smack in the middle between two big places that have already done it. And if I were, my neighbor, who's a small-scale contractor, buys his own equipment, et cetera, his view was, I would have to have two sets of equipment because I already have to have in order to work outside of Tacoma Park. Now, granted, there are plenty of people who only work in Tacoma Park, but that's what I heard from the person that I checked with, so.
That's counterintuitive because you wouldn't need two sets of equipment if, like, if you were giving all of your people electric leaf blowers and whatnot. They would just use them everywhere they went. And so then, like, that then redounds back to the whole thing about the rebate program, its application, its use, the specificity by which it is being applied, and the prohibitive aspects of applying for things.
Councilmember Dibala, are you done? I'm gonna call the vote.
I am.
Okay. So the, this is also a first reading ordinance amending the city code to ban combustible engine-powered leaf blowers. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Fulter?
Yes.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Hansak?
Yes.
Councilmember Small?
Aye.
Mayor Circe?
Hi.
Okay, we're gonna move into our work session. The item for this evening, we have staff back to do the, provide us with the facilities' regulations review. I'll turn things over to the city manager to set up the discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Supportive, where I'd just like to say this reminds me a lot of Colin Powell being at the Weapons of Mass Destruction hearing.
City Manager Dispierto, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yes, it is my pleasure to introduce Gregory Clark to present this evening the review of the revised administrative regulations on the use of certain public facilities. Mayor and council will recall that several weeks ago, we had a previous discussion and received feedback and suggestions from the mayor and council. We have, we have staff have taken that information and that valuable feedback and presented you with some further revisions to this proposed revised administrative regulation. And we hope that it is in line with the intent of the mayor and council. But first, I would like to call on Mr. Clark to give us an overview of some of the things that were in fact modified. And then we are happy to answer any questions or entertain any discussion with you as you further consider these proposed changes.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Hopefully, everyone is doing well. I'm back again presenting revision of the administrative regulation for facilities. And I just wanna go over a few of the changes that was made in the document since our last meeting. And I'll start off with, there was an update to the reservation request process, which is on page four of ten. There was also an update to the language contained in the Hefner Park Community Center portion of the document, which is also on page four of ten, and that's highlighted in green. This document includes a provision to have patrons pay a fee for staff if requested by the city manager or their designee, which is on page five of ten under staffing fee. This document also allows patrons to provide insurance in lieu of a deposit for certain events, which is on page six of ten under the insurance section. This document allows groups to use heavy equipment and games on city fields and city-approved areas, which is on page eight of ten, which is the second to the last bullet on that page. This document reinforces city parking guidelines around facilities and fields, pardon me, and that's on page eight of ten as well, and that's on the last bullet on that page. This document brings the fee structure for rentals up to date, which is shown on Exhibit B in the document. And lastly, the document reduces the number of free rentals for recognized community groups from eleven to five per year, which is highlighted in Exhibit C in the document. All right? So I compiled just about everything we discussed at our last meeting at the end of January and made the adjustments, and now I'm ready to take questions.
All right, wonderful. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Clark. I didn't, maybe I was reading while you were talking, but I didn't hear you mention the moon bounces and stages on the field. That was another change that you made that I think addressed one of our concerns.
Yes, that was, allows, that's on page eight of ten. Allows groups to use heavy equipment and games on city fields and city-approved areas.
Yes. I just, having looked through this before the meeting, I looked at all the changes, and I'm supportive of the regulation as it stands. So thank you for listening to us.
Thank you, Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, again, Greg, for the benefit of the peanut calorie, can you dictate what these changes are? I know you don't necessarily have the desire to recall the conversation back and forth, but because there were some expressed concerns about both sort of segregationist history of this policy and some of its racist applications, I was wondering if you could lay that out?
Yeah, the document allows for any type of event at any facility. At Hefner Park Community Center, if you can see on page, let me see what page it is, page four, it says, the language says, "Due to parking limitations, we suggest that the use of, has the Hefner Park Community Center be used for certain activities," and that those other activities, or larger activities, could take place in other facility facilities. But if that's where you want to have your event, then that's where you have your event. And we just make sure that we communicate the parking limitations and follow the rules and procedures, other procedures that we have in place.
Thanks, and thank you, Greg. And I just wanted to reiterate here that I really appreciate you having to carry the water for an outdated and oppressive policy that for some reason nobody bothered to look at until they had to put you up here on Mount Calvary or someplace, I don't know. So thank you.
Okay, great. Well, one, I want to thank you so much, Deputy Clark, for working on this. I know that this is something that a lot of us had a number of comments and really wanted for a while, and so recognizing all of the hard work that's gone into making the modifications. And forgive me, there's a couple of just really small things that I was kind of going through, and I was like, check, check, check. That was something that I had mentioned, check. The, in terms of, can you just refresh my memory regarding how we're defining the community groups? And in terms of the fees for the community center rooms, are nonprofits able to rent space within our, within our community center rooms? So like the Lilac, the Azalea, what would be the fee for that?
Yes, nonprofits are able to rent space in the community center. They don't have a separate price for it, so we traditionally charge them the business rate.
Okay. Is it possible for us to just clarify that?
Yep.
That, you know, this would be nonprofit business fee?
Yep, I can add that. I believe it might be in here.
I felt like it was in there, and then I'm looking now, and I'm not seeing it.
It says same.
Yeah, but it's under the auditorium. It's not for the rooms. But I felt like there was some language in some of the paragraphs previously that made that point clear, but now I'm just seeing it under auditorium, and I'm not seeing it for the community center rooms.
Okay, I can definitely make that, make that adjustment.
I'm sorry, Mayor, point one more thing.
Yes, I'm so sorry for folks that are asking me questions. I am looking at the, next to the last pages where it says the rental fee and security deposit?
Yes.
That page. And so you see where there's auditorium, there's nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations, but you're not necessarily seeing a rate for all of these other spaces. And I was just trying to make sure that I understood if we have nonprofits and where this at. Yeah, so the business rate applies to all organizations, nonprofits, and for-profit entities. Yeah. Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. The one other thing that I did want to bring up and have the city staff weigh in on is the certificate of insurance angle with regard to liability and/or what sorts of damages and other things can be happening in the facilities. And I know that that was a concern I raised, and we've talked about it a little bit, but I just wanted to make sure that you outlined that as well.
Yes, that is on page six of ten under the insurance section, where it says, "The permit holder assumes all liability for activities related to their use of a facility. A certificate of insurance naming the city as an additional insured may be required. Limits and type of insurance will be determined by the city."
Excellent. Excellent work. I just wanted to make sure you got a chance to say that out loud so I could say that was excellent.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, just question, a little bit of history here. How many, how many city or community groups were using the eleven? I mean, just roughly. I mean, this seems like a big shift from eleven to six, I guess, and I presume that's because that there, we want to leave room for other groups to use it, but just kind of the justification of that change.
I may have to get that, get back to you with that one.
But it was, but there were, there were folks that were obviously using that whole, that whole...
It was very few that actually used eleven.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, it's very few.
Right, and if I remember...
Eleven to five, yeah.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, Councilmember Gibson, I may be totally wrong because, you know, at about 10 o'clock, my memory isn't the best. If I recall, we did ask staff to look into the frequencies in which community groups are reserving the space, and they came back and said, they, we don't have any groups that reserve at the max, that most of them fell within a specific range, and that was the modification that's being made now.
Correct.
So this conforms to basically our norm?
Our norm.
And limits those that were, kind of exceed, on the extreme end. And so, yeah, and I guess it makes sense then, it does allow other groups to use it. I mean, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, Councilmember Hansak?
I'm really pleased with the changes that have been made. I was just curious, has your team given any consideration for the criteria for waiving fees altogether in addition to those five per year? I know that at various times, since I'm a newer council member, we have, the council historically has waived fees for the auditorium or something else. Was that considered as part of this sort of revisit to the facilities? I'm just kind of curious. I, it's something I've personally been interested in about what criteria the council, for example, historically has applied, or if it's somewhat arbitrary about, and subjective from council to council about when they decide to waive fees. But it's an interesting question to me since we have the five, you know, the five free rentals per year for these groups.
Since I've been here, the city manager has the only person that can waive fees, other, of course, other than, you know, through the process of, you know, applying for one of the five free rentals, or eleven free rentals was then. But we usually seek advice of the city manager for that to happen. So that's not a decision that's made on my level.
Right, and that process is not unusual with cities. In my last city, I did the same. Normally, in the guidepost that I used was if there was a compelling public purpose, you know, this was a community benefit type of event, that might be something we take seriously into consideration for a waiver versus charging a fee. If it was a big, if it was a big event and it was a request for waiver, my own approach would be to notify the mayor and council and... my own approach would be to notify the mayor and council and perhaps receive some feedback on that. If it was, say, would otherwise have been large fee or been use of a major facility or multiple dates, that kind of thing might rise to the level where I say, hey, I'd like to get a little bit of feedback from the mayor and council. But for relatively small events, and it's a one-off type of event, I might just use my best judgment. When faced with a request for a waiver, just the degree, I'd certainly be working with my staff for their input as to the degree of public purpose involved in the proposed event.
Thank you very much.
And one other thing that I just want to give a quick kudos on is how you all dealt with the youth issue. And looking through the document, I appreciate that things have been clarified and it's not like youth events, and we're just making it really clear on page eight of ten that, you know, adults need to be present, and as long as it's no less than a one-to-ten ratio, you could have kids-
Absolutely.
-teenagers in the Hefner building, and as long as they have the right ratio of adults, they could have an awesome time. So thank you so much for that.
No problem.
Okay, so I'm not seeing any additional lights. So just as a quick check, this will be coming back to the council for a vote. Am I correct about that? And so just want to encourage, oh, do we, is this not a vote? Do we not vote on this?
I think it's a public-
Is this an administrative reg?
Yes.
Right, you only vote on it if you want to.
Right.
If, if you decide that you want to hold a hearing or vote. Otherwise, it doesn't come through.
As a point of order, that's why one of the things about the value of regulations is, can be somewhat difficult because there's no public display of your values or goals.
So in terms of, I just want to make sure, because again, it's late, that the, this will go, be posted as an administrative reg for public comment. And I know that for some other regs, depending on the level of comments that come through, I just ask for staff to make us aware. There's a substantial number of comments that come through from the general public that warrant substantial modifications to the administrative reg. It would be really helpful for us to know that, so then we can determine whether or not it's something that we want to vote on.
Right.
Excellent. Thank you all so much. Not seeing any additional lights. I think we're going to be done for the evening before 10 o'clock. All right. Thank you all so much. Have a wonderful night.